Chair DuBois.
Here.
Councilmember Phil Seth, councilmember Fine, Mayor Scharf, for present.
Thank you. It's the June 28th meeting of the Rail Committee. Do we have any oral communications? We have one speaker, Richard Brand.
Good morning, everybody, committee members. Richard Brand, 281 Addison. And the reason I brought this up, I went back to look at the April video and when Ben Tripusus was here from High Speed Rail, he had a question from, I think, Mayor Scharf about passing tracks, which had come up. And in that discussion, he mentioned that two out of the three of their options would bring passing tracks, four tracks into Palo Alto. And he committed to, well, it wasn't a commitment, but he said he would be happy to provide you with information on this. Couple of us checked and that information has not been provided. We checked with the High Speed Rail group and I would recommend this committee ask for that information as a follow-up to the question that was posed to him and his commitment to do so. So that's my comment for today. I think people need to know about this passing track issue. It's still up in the air and he did indicate he had two of three, or three options already on the table. Thank you.
We have a late entry, Adina Levin. Good morning.
Good morning, Adina Levin, Friends of Caltrain. So a couple of things. So first of all, the, as you may know, the, there's a regional measure, three bridge toll funding measure coming through at MTC and then for the state legislature that would need to authorize the bill and they're talking about the allocation plan, including some discussions up at MTC this evening. San Mateo County and Alameda County have, and AC Transit have placeholder in for Dunbarton funding, Dunbarton Corridor funding pending the results of the SAM Trans study about what to spend the money on. However, I noticed when I looked at the list of requests that Santa Clara County does not have Dunbarton as one of the requested projects and I am wondering whether this is something that Palo Alto and Mountain View that do have something to gain from that connection to relieve traffic that goes through Palo Alto. Has that been requested through VTA and is that something that might be done even at this late date? If this is something that's already a policy, that seems kind of glaringly missing. And the second point, actually relating to the passing tracks, the high-speed rail process is delayed to some uncertain date. One of the things that's important to look at the passing tracks is what the impacts are going to be physically to the local community, but also what the impacts of not doing any passing tracks, which it seems like what High Speed Rail is trying to do, what the impacts would be on the Caltrain schedule, the proposals that they talk about with no passing tracks, have Caltrain trains sitting for five to 10 minutes while the fast trains go by. And if we want to get traffic off the roads, changing the Caltrain schedule so that our commuter trains wait for 10 minutes for a train from LA, doesn't seem to help our goal there either, so that's another thing to be looking out for. Thank you.
Just want to ask, staff has any comments on either the High Speed Rail or the Dunbarton?
Not at this time. We can certainly follow up on those.
Just a comment, I think both speakers raised good points about clarifying the number and type of tracks coming through Palo Alto and we have the obligation to ask about that. I'm also interested in the comment about what does it mean if we don't do those tracks?
So all the communications we've had to date with both Caltrain and High Speed Rail have led us to believe that they are not pursuing passing tracks in Palo Alto anymore. The only thing they're presenting in the public now is the passing tracks from San Mateo to Redwood City. So we can certainly ask for additional clarification from them.
Okay, let's move on to item number one, staff review.
Sure. Item number one is the rail program briefing packet and that's from May to June. It includes the period after your last meeting, all the way until the preparation of this packet. One key thing I do want to draw your attention to in that is section one says that we have reserved the Mitchell Community Park, Mitchell Community Center for September 30th for our second community workshop. September 30th is actually a religious holiday, so we have moved that to October 23rd. And then another key item in this briefing packet is a meeting that we had on June 6th with Caltrain staff and I just wanted to update you a little bit on the electrification On the screen, you'll see a map for the electrification project and you see the corridor is broken into four segments, work segments. And Caltrain is beginning construction on segments two and four pretty soon. And it is a design-build contract, so the way it's working is as construction starts, they're concurrently finishing up design for the final segment of each work segment. So, for example, construction will likely start in South San Francisco on segment two at the same time they are finalizing design for the southern end in San Carlos, Redwood City and Atherton. So that explains why we have not seen the same level of design that Atherton has had because Atherton's in an earlier work segment, so.
Which segments are which I can't see?
The top from San Francisco to Brisbane is segment one. From Brisbane to Atherton is segment two. And then from Menlo Park to just north of Santa Clara is segment three and then everything south of Santa Clara is segment four. So two and four will be the first segments constructed and then design will begin on one and three and then they'll progress down the corridor with the design and then before they complete design for one and three, they'll actually start construction on the northern segments of one and three.
You said October 23rd, that's like in the middle of the week for the next community meeting? Did you mean September?
Oh, sorry, 28th, October 28th. It's a Saturday, it'll be exactly the same format as the last meeting that we had.
Wait, September 28th or?
October 28th. And we tried, we looked all over for a room that was available in September or early October and we just couldn't find anything. So that concludes the update under item one.
Any comments or questions?
So just on the schedule, so the schedule is clear where all the stuff is wrong.
Right.
The schedule says September 30th for the community workshop too. That's October 28th.
That's correct. And that change was made after the preparation of this report, so I apologize for the mistaken date.
And somewhere in the staff report it said September.
All of the meeting materials were prepared before we realized that September 30th was a religious holiday and had to move the date.
So good to get in your calendars, hope to see all of you heads there.
Could I just go back for a second on the construction schedule real quickly? I mean, is the idea that each segment is completed construction before the next batch starts? I mean, is one and whatever it is, is it two and four, are they finished before one and three start?
I don't believe so. I think they're just staging it so that they can mobilize and complete design in an efficient manner in advance of construction.
And then for our segment, what's the rough time period for construction? How long could that be? What's the range of time, I guess, just out of curiosity?
I can look into that. I know the whole project's expected to be finished by, I believe, 2021.
So a couple, couple of quick questions. So October 23rd seems like a long time without community input. How are we going to get community input between then and now?
We can update you on that under the next item on the update from the summary of the workshop.
Okay. And then I saw here you have the technical advisory committee meeting in August. Yes, what are we asking them to advise on? What's the agenda for that meeting?
The first meeting will just be an intro of our rail program and explain, you know, where we are in the process and there'll be no decisions made or anything beyond just introducing them to the project.
Okay, yeah, it seems a little, like to have like community input and community ideas for the TAC to give advice on. So it sounds like we're getting a little out of sync maybe. And then thanks for the update on the construction. Who's responsible for tracking the electrification project and the impact of trees and the pole design?
So we're currently working on finalizing a comprehensive agreement with Caltrain for the Calmod project. We had a meeting last week and there's a follow-up meeting with the attorneys this coming week to try to finalize that agreement and that'll be coming to council and that outlines the review process for the different elements of the Calmod.
Are you personally tracking this?
That's being led by the Public Works Development Services Manager, but we have participated. All the various city departments are participating.
So Public Works is going to be looking at the tree impacts?
There'll be, in the agreement, there'll be a process outlined on how all of that will be reviewed and what the city's responsibilities are versus the design-build contractor in Caltrain. And that agreement will be coming forward to council.
The urban forestry programs and Public Works and Brad Eggleston's a key, I mean, we have several staff people.
Okay.
Dedicated to this.
Well, hopefully the message is clear that there's concern. Okay, thank you. We'll move on to item one.
Thank you. So building on Tom's point, it would be nice to just see the TAC agendas as you guys are publishing them and working with them. I don't know how my colleagues feel about this. The one that I kind of felt was missing from the group was maybe the PTC. The T's often forgotten in that group, but I don't know if staff has any comments there with PTC was considered or?
We'll also provide information on that with the next item on the agenda.
And then just last question. So we are going on break and as Tom mentioned, the next meeting's in October, which is a ways off. But I did notice there's this online community survey through July and there's a three bullet points, project problem statement, project goals, evaluation criteria. What's the survey? Is the survey like, do you know this is happening or?
If you'd like, we can move into agenda item two. We were going to talk about a lot of this during that item.
Yep, let's do that. So first, why don't you go ahead and then we have one public speaker.
Great. So included in your packet is the draft written report for the workshop that we held on May 20th and please review that at your leisure and provide us any comments you may have on it, any takeaways. We use this to inform, as well as your direction at the last meeting, to inform our next steps over the summer. And what we are proposing is to go to PTC on August 9th, Rail Committee on August 23rd and then City Council on August 28th with a multi-part staff report and action item that would include a draft problem statement, draft goals for this project and then draft performance measures, as well as an updated community engagement CSS plan that council member DuBois suggested that we bring to council at the last meeting. So it would be a four-part action item and we were proposing to go to PTC first, then Rail Committee and City Council. And in order to keep the public involved throughout the summer, we didn't want to just fall off the radar over the summer, we're proposing to do an online survey throughout the month of July that would help us kind of refine the recommendations that came out of the community workshop on May 20th. So we would ask the public to provide input on the problem statement, the goals and the performance measures and we would use that survey input as well as feedback from the interviews that we had in the workshop on May 20th to draft the problem statement, the goals and the performance measures that we would bring to PTC Rail Committee and Council in August.
Okay. Any questions or comments? So that wasn't actually in the report, that's new information as well, right?
It is, it is. It's, we had always planned to do a second community workshop and now that it's been moved to October, we feel it's very important to keep the community involved and to bring along the people that turned out on May 20th, as well as other folks, other stakeholders and constituents. So we think the survey will be a good way to maintain that involvement. We're also likely to do some newsletters, some e-newsletters where we take some of the information provided to the Rail Committee and, you know, put it in a more readable format for general citizens in a newsletter through email.
So two things. One is when we do come back, say to rail on the 23rd, you know, one of the components that we're talking about here is sort of what our engagement strategies and options will be and we're hopeful that we can bring a range of approaches and tools. That being said, you know, we've got a meeting this morning at the staff level, just sort of talking about this survey a little bit and Josh, if it's okay with you and the committee. If we could talk about that just for a little bit, your sense of the survey, you know, because, you know, I'm just curious in what you're thinking is about who are we trying to engage? In other words, there are people who are really sort of involved in this and who, no pun intended, track this issue, who might more logically kind of jump on and get really involved in a detailed survey versus just sort of say the public at large and kind of curious about your, your thinking about that as elected representatives here in the community.
Before we dive into that, we do have one public speaker, so we could put a pin in that and come back to it. So we have one speaker, Richard Brand, this item.
He was here earlier too. Yeah, I know, I'm pretty noisy for this time of the morning. So Richard Brand, resident of Palo Alto. Actually, councilmember Fine brought up the point that I had about the PTC. So, yeah, I know at the last meeting, that was an issue that was, I thought, an action, but at least it was a recommendation and I firmly support that the PTC is a good way to pursue this while things are shut down. The other thing too on this report, and I attended the workshop, I live in the north part of the city and, which I felt was not very well represented based on the number of comments that were made about the crossing at Alma and El Camino, the one in the north end of town. And I think while there's a lot of energy down in the middle and the south part of the city, obviously because of the four, three tracks Churchill South, I don't want to overlook the importance of that entrance and that crossing and that's a tough one because we're right on the creek there. So just to, just to make that point, that's something that even though you won't see a lot of responses in the report, I think there's a lot of interest once people start to realize what this is all about, so. The other thing too, there's a thing in here about passing tracks. I know that Mr. Mello made a comment about that. I'd encourage you to look at the April video and you'll see that passing tracks in the Palo Alto are an option on the table for them. Thank you.
Okay, so any comments on the survey? Types of questions?
Well, I mean, I just, you know, the staff has been working on design. It looks like some of it's maybe some follow-up from the, from the May 30th session that we had. And I'm just curious, I mean, some of you were there, you saw, and we did a little sort of Sifly survey and that sort of a thing and is, you know, do we want to replicate that, deepen that, you know, follow-up, you know? And again, yeah, maybe Josh can speak.
Yeah, so the survey kind of refines what came out of the May 20th workshop and will enable folks to give us additional direction to get to, you know, eventually get to a draft problem statement, goals and performance measures that are much more detailed than what came out of the May 20th workshop. So, you know, it's primarily a way, I think, to keep the public engaged throughout the summer. We don't want people to lose interest, especially since we're going to have to push the second meeting all the way till October. So we certainly would like to hear your thoughts on the approach to distributing the survey, whether that's an appropriate strategy before coming to PTC Rail Committee and City Council in August.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's an appropriate approach. I mean, I guess I would like you to engage broadly as many people as possible. I mean, I guess the purpose of the survey is to engage the community as opposed to having a, you know, appropriate sample and get a meaningful cross-section, you know, right? I mean, we're not, I mean, they're two different things. I mean, I guess I wanted to know first of all what staff thought we were going to do there. I mean, is we going to poll or are we, are we basically trying to just get as much engagement as possible? And that means the results we get probably won't mean anything in terms of what the community thinks or, or any of that. So I guess I'm trying to get a sense of what you're looking to accomplish with this.
So I think it's primarily a way to keep the community engaged and not bring something forward to PTC Rail and Committee and Council without first consulting with the larger community. And one of the primary tenets of CSS is to keep the stakeholders continually involved in the process. So I think as we move forward in this process, we're going to have to get to a point where we make decisions in a more structured manner with the public, but I think this initial survey is just more of an engagement tool and.
So I think the big problem here is we've moved it from September 30th to October 28th, which is too late. It should be done earlier. And I'm sure you thought about it, I'm not saying, I just, I think that's the fundamental issue. And is there a reason we can't do some of the other weekends?
So we looked at the, you know, the usual large forums that are available to us through the whole month of September and there was nothing available.
So who has these forums? Bump them. No, seriously, I mean, we own the facilities, bump them. This is more important. I mean, I think October 28th is too long. I mean, I don't know if anyone else agrees, but it seems, it seems that's what we're trying to shoehorn around and, you know, I mean.
Have we looked at any of the schools even before school starts? So I had kind of the same thoughts. I think we need to be really clear what the purpose of the survey is. If it's really just engagement and it's self-selected people, let's not then use that data as facts and, you know, if we really want input, I think the methodology is really critical. So, you know, should we mail the people live in a certain distance of the track to at least try to get some kind of representation? And even to Richard Brand's point, maybe if you really want to engage people, maybe we have slightly different surveys for different areas and we ask people who live near grade crossings about that grade crossing. I think that would be interesting, you know, like if we were underrepresented with North Palo Alto for Alma, if we mailed everybody who lived around that intersection, they probably have more ideas. So again, I just don't want to mix it and do like an online survey and then we treat that data statistically representing something.
I think the survey would just be another data point in, you know, we've already collected a lot of great information from those individual interviews we did in advance of May 20th. We also got great feedback on May 20th and then the third kind of data point would be the survey and, you know, none of those are scientific by any means, but I think when we bring it forward to PTC Rail Committee and Council, we make it very clear that this is a summary of all of the engagement. But I think, you know, one of the things we could also do is maybe go back to those individuals that we interviewed and talk to them about the problem statement and, you know, have a second follow-up interview where we get more into the weeds about the problem statement and the goals and the performance measures.
Maybe there is an opportunity over the summer to do something more scientific. Again, maybe it's a mailing, you know, not, doesn't have to be super expensive, but. A couple of quick thoughts. Terms of refining, you know, the goal and the problem we're trying to solve, I mean, the next item is the, is past work, but there was a lot of community work done. I'm wondering if we should leverage the goals that the rail corridor study identified in 2012, 13. And then the last point, I think I mentioned it last time, but I saw in the report, Lydia Ku did attend half the day and she wasn't, we specifically listed councilmembers that were there, I think we should add her to the, to the report.
Me too.
What's that?
Me too.
You were listed, right? Oh, okay, so two more.
I was just going to comment, if the goal is engagement and we're not going to do anything with the data, then maybe I'd consider whether a survey is actually the right vehicle or something else might be more appropriate.
Yeah, I was going to follow up on that. I, I think a survey is confusing because then people think we're getting data and then I'll, if I like the results, I'll say, "Look, Tom, those results are great, like you did last time." And Tom's like, "Those results mean nothing." And that was exactly the conversation we had. If Tom had liked the data, I would have said, "Tom, those results don't mean anything."
There is science.
But the point is, is that, you know, I mean, if you want to keep people engaged, have small community meetings. Go out to, you know, have a small community meeting around the Alma one, have a small community meeting with those stakeholders and do something, I don't know. I mean, I'm not sure what the answer is, but I do think the most important thing is moving that October 28th meeting earlier.
So, so just so, yeah, well, Claire is, how do we not have such a big gap? You know, what Josh has been talking to us about is even, even if we were on our original schedule, you know, the last public engagement was at the end of May. So we've got to sort of stay fresh in some way with the community that says, hey, you know, this is still happening, you're, we're still involved. But it also sounds like we're, we're talking more about trying to design things that aren't ultimately, well, I'll just call it scientific per se. And I think that that might have some challenges anyway. I mean, it does seem that we want to get a little more refined as to what we really think the description of the world is and the issues before we're going to go out and... I think you want to have that inform, you know, a more statistically significant survey rather than just stuff that's all over the map and you can throw it up on the wall sort of thing, so.
So if we elected not to do the survey, there's, you know, a couple of alternatives that I don't necessarily know would work as well, which would be to try to throw together a public meeting in advance of the PTC, which will be the first meeting in August 9th where we bring forward the draft problem statement, goals and performance measures. I don't think we have the resources to throw together a meeting in July. We would also get criticized for having a meeting when people are out of town and schools out. The other alternative would be to bring the draft problem statement, et cetera, to PTC without getting public input through a survey or some other mechanism and then I think we'd be criticized for that as well. So there are other alternatives. The third would be to delay everything and have a, you know, at the September public meeting, use that to develop the problem statement, the goals and the performance measures.
So I actually think the problem is we're using the word survey. I think if we called it, you know, "We're reaching out and getting public input and this is the public input we received, here's a questionnaire for public input." Questionnaire. I, I mean, I've been thinking about what the problem is and I think it's just, I think it's just terminology and we shouldn't get hung up. So I think it's a good idea, I think you should go do it. I just think we shouldn't, I think if we call it a survey, we'll, we ourselves will get hung up on what that means. Whereas if you call it a questionnaire and it's, this is the public input, this is what we received, we're keeping the public engaged, I think all of those are laudable goals.
I think you just called it something else. I mean, again, I think there is a choice. We could do something more scientific to get public input or we're going to get a bunch of input, but we really don't know what it represents, or we do some kind of other outreach. And, I mean, you mentioned August again, if there's some location in September or some way we could do something with the public in September, I do think that would be better. Again, it feels like you just want to have outreach and keep people engaged. I'm not sure why we're mixing that with data collection.
Well, that's what I was trying not to do, is mix it with data collection and mix it with, you know, it's equivalent of like public speakers. Well, it's equivalent like having a public speaker. It's not scientific. You know, Mr. Brand shows up, we listen to what you say, we think about what you say, there's no one else in the room who's the public speaker except Adina, but we listen to you. But we listen to you too. But I mean, that's, that's really what I mean, is, you know, that's good.
Just a few things. So I do agree, I think, with most of you about what is the purpose of the survey. I think, Tom, you've hit it, that it's, there's either engagement or there's data and we may not get them in the same way. One thing, whether we call it a survey, a questionnaire or a public input, I was really struck at the community meeting, how informative I thought the slides about like what a great separation is to folks. And as we're going through the problem definition, I know we're not supposed to precede ideas in the CSS process, it may be helpful to just show folks a smattering of what is possible, right? Whether it's local examples or around the world or the country. I just kind of got the sense a lot of folks, when you say, "We're talking about great separations and great separations and passing tracks," and at some level, folks just like need to be reminded, "These are roads underneath or over rail" or something like that. I just find those helpful and think it might be a nice way to seed the public.
Can I just want to, so we also have this just practical, real-life problems, right? I mean, there's a summer break and people in town go out of town also, so it's a little bit more of a dormant period. Josh is going to be off for a month, as we shared.
You're allowing that?
If we want to keep him for the long term. And, and then, you know, it takes, it takes work to put these things together. I mean, to really develop a scientific survey, for example. I mean, it's more complicated than some framing questions for input. And I would just ask that we realize that we're, we're going to have to try 10 or 20 different things over time and they all kind of will inform. And almost anything we're going to do is going to be, anybody's going to be able to criticize it. "Well, I wouldn't have asked the questions that way," or, you know, I mean, this is Palo Alto after all. So it's always the, the challenge of, let's get something together and do it, and then let's also be sure it's perfect and it hits every sort of sweet spot. And we're not going to be able to do that. And that's why I do think that right at this stage, we're going to talk more later this morning on the staff, that some outreach and something that is informative, keeping the subject alive and getting some perspectives from people is what we would do as opposed to really trying to draw conclusions in this next step. We did want to bring it up because you, you might even get the questionnaire yourself or you'll certainly hear from people. "Hey, I got this questionnaire from the city. God, it was like, you know, took me an hour to do the thing," or whatever it was, or, "I didn't understand the questions," or, "I really liked them," or, "It was too simplistic." I mean, you're just going to hear all of that stuff. And that's why we did want to surface it with you and realize this is not our only shot. This is just another link in the chain between now and at least the next meeting.
Claudia Keith, Chief Communications Officer. I just wanted to make the point that we do have a lot of platforms that we use. We use a lot in the comprehensive plan for the elements for just this very purpose, whether to be a touch point or to engage the community, that we haven't used as scientific, but it's definitely been public input. We have like 2,000 subscribers to Open City Hall, which, which is a really good venue next door. We've had good results and of course we have a lot of social media channels. So, you know, if we're looking to just keep the community engaged, we have those tools in place. And of course, you know, devising the right content and what you're asking is important. But, you know, that is something that we do a lot and is readily available. And that would be one way to at least reach out to the community and let them know what's going on.
Okay. So I think, I think we'll close that item. You've heard a lot of the feedback and are you guys going to see if it's possible to do something in September?
Yeah, so my takeaway is, and please correct me if I'm wrong, we're going to try
to find a meeting location for September. We're going to, I think we should re-interview the stakeholders that we've talked to about, you know, the questions that we're going to ask on the questionnaire. We're going to look at the 2014 study and see if there's items we can pull from that into the goals for this project. We'll make edits to the report to add Lydia Koo and Councilmember Fine to the list of attendees. And then we'll call it a questionnaire, not a survey, and make it very clear that it is helping, you know, solicit public input for upcoming decisions by PTC Rail Committee and Council.
Great. Let's move on to item number three, which is...
Sure. So on the, the takeaway from the, from the meeting, I mean, my sort of really high-level take was, we asked people what they care about in grade crossings, and the answer was autocongestion, bike capacity and safety. Is that an accurate summary?
Yes, and those varied by grade crossing. So some of them, bike pet was more important, some motor vehicle circulation was more important.
Okay, so moving on to item three, which is a review of past rail efforts.
Thank you. This item was prepared at your request. It includes a summary of all recent studies and council actions related to grade separations. It includes a summary of the 2014 rail corridor study as well as the, sorry, the 20, I think it was 2012 rail corridor study, and then the work that was done by Mark McDonald around the trenching feasibility analysis. It also includes a schedule that we put together, and I'll pull that up on the screen. So this is an attempt by us to visually represent where each of the other jurisdictions are in their planning process for grade separations. And I pulled it up on the screen if you want to look at it in a little more detail. So you can see we're a couple of years behind most of the other jurisdictions in our planning and design work. The ones without bars, it was a little bit hard to, you know, get additional information on where they are in their process. In Palo Alto, Mountain View and Sunnyvale, Rengstorf Avenue in Mountain View is by far the furthest along in the project development process. And those are relevant because of the VTA grade separation funding that's been allocated. So please let me know if you have any questions or comments or requested edits to this information.
I had a question on this slide, actually. I think it'd be really useful to know kind of what form of grade separation each of these cities is using and what their budget estimates are. I just think that would be really useful to see maybe at the next meeting. And I guess the other thought I had is, we have this thick packet of planning that we've done, but we're saying we haven't done any planning. I mean, I'm wondering if, you know, when we look at other cities, I mean, it's not like we haven't been doing anything.
So there's kind of two levels of planning in transportation projects. There's the, the high-level kind of corridor study type plan that we have done, and then there's the project development process, which is the concept planning, preliminary design, environmental and final design. And these, this schedule is, is really just looking at the project development process, not any kind of circulation analysis or comp plan or anything that's more of a high-level policy plan.
Any other comments on...
So I, I know this document 3410 is in here twice, actually, but I noticed from the 2012, 2013 area that the previous incarnation of the rail committee, the preferred alternative is the trench, right? Is that still something that we should follow or how should, how should we treat that?
Well, the rail corridor study was a policy document that was incorporated into the comp plan. That is, I think, to be taken as a guiding principle as we move forward. But, you know, the true context-sensitive alternatives analysis process really should start with a, you know, relatively blank slate. And it's hard to pre-prescribe a solution if we haven't yet identified the problem and the goals and the performance measures. So I think that is definitely a guiding principle moving forward. But, you know, we're taking it from the very high-level policy plan down to project development, which is, you know, a lot more specific in its look at feasibility and budget and future funding and other aspects.
Could I just follow up on what you just said? I'm not sure I followed it. So Councilmember Phil Seth asked whether or not trenching was a guiding principle, and you said it was. By council policy, is that what you were thinking?
The rail corridor study was incorporated. If you look at the item that's included in your packet, it was incorporated into the comprehensive plan by council action. And one of the recommendations of that is to advance the trench alternative.
So when we adopt the new comprehensive plan, so the problem I'm having is the second part of what you said as well, which is, we basically adopted, "Let's go out to the community, let's do a CSS process, let's outreach, let's do that." And as you said, that doesn't predetermine a, you know, a decision of what we're going to do before we do the process. So we can't have a guiding principle that says, "This is what we've chosen to do," right? And it's basically what you were saying. We can't have a guiding principle, it's what's chosen to do, which would be a trench. And that's in the comprehensive plan. So I would think that supersedes the prior council policy because we adopted going out and doing that. So I actually think it can't be council policy because that's not the policy we're following. We're not all sitting here deciding how we do a trench. We're going to the community.
I think it says there's a preference for trench.
So that's, that's a good question. So if it's a preference, that's a, a different issue than saying, you know, the trench is the, is the policy. And if...
Preferred alternative.
Okay. So I'm just thinking, and then when we adopt the new comprehensive plan, are we adopting it with that rail corridor study or not?
So I'll let Hillary jump in, but you know, there's also the whole issue of SEQA in this process, and we can't predetermine an alternative before we go through the environmental process just because something is, you know, identified in a comp plan. But I'll let Hillary.
Thank you. Hillary Gittleman, the Planning Director. The comprehensive plan update that the council's seen now any number of times talks about grade separating all of the crossings, but it doesn't specify the methods. The EIR has talked about trenching for Charleston and Meadow because we had the study that you received a copy of this morning that identified that as a potentially feasible way to get it done and it had some traction at the time we started the EIR process. But I think we're suggesting adoption of a comp plan that leaves open exactly how the grade separations would be accomplished while acknowledging this prior work and the, quote, "preference" for either, you know, depressed or certainly not an elevated alignment.
Now, yes, and is the language in the, the language in the, in the draft new comp plan, does that, do we retrench from our earlier comp plan position? I mean, do...
Well, that was my question. My question was, are we not, if we're not incorporating that rail study into the new comp plan, which I assume we were not frankly when we were doing the comp plan. I don't remember seeing that, but I, you know...
Yeah. No, we reference it as source material, but the new comp plan talks about grade separating all four crossings and doesn't specify how.
Okay. So once we adopt that, we will have solved this little technical issue.
I had a, I guess I kind of cut the tail end of this, but I guess my big question was what happened? We were kind of going through this process and then it stopped.
You mean, say before you were on council?
Yeah. You probably had the most context.
No, I, I, you know.
So in the summary that's included in this item, you'll see that, you know, the 2012 study was primarily a reaction to work that was underway with high-speed rail. And when the high-speed rail project became less urgent, I think, unfortunately, I think the grade separation work also became less urgent and some of the follow-through items...
There's no money for it.
Yeah, and some of the follow-through items that are identified in the corridor study, you know, didn't come to fruition. And I think a lot of it was because the urgency of the high-speed rail project died off a little bit.
So, you know, my, my impression kind of reading some of the stuff was, I mean, there is some good work here. We did some community output. We started to do kind of pre-EIR work. As we do community outreach, I think we should build on this and maybe we should summarize some of this for the community. Again, the vision statement here on page two seems like a good vision statement.
Are we on 3410?
Page...
The staff report.
Page 131.
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, you know, maybe that vision statement could be used to feed into helping to form the goals. So again, I think it was good to see, and, and we kind of, some of this isn't really that old. I mean, some of it's a bit older, but I think a lot of the same people are involved in the community. So I kind of feel like we shouldn't ignore this and, you know, throw a lot of this away.
Yeah, I guess I see, so overarching everything, I see the comp plan and then the rail corridor study at the next level, and then the work that we're undertaking over the next two years is kind of further refining both of those and getting us to a much more finite discussion around the actual projects that it would take to implement some of the visions that come from those two higher plans.
If I can just add something. I mean, I think we've been struggling with this since we started this year's rail committee meetings, which is we've committed to the CSS process, which is kind of a blank slate process. At the same time, we've done all this prior work and many of us have our own personal vision of what we think the ultimate alternative or alternatives should look like. And so every time we meet, we're kind of having this discussion, how much deference do we give to the prior work?
Well, again, and again, as a bundle of ideas, it seems like including it in the bundle would be a good idea. There, I saw in here some interesting ideas that were not in our current list, like I think bike pet under Alma. I saw a bike path on Kellogg to Palley instead of taking it off of Churchill, which is something we haven't been talking about at all.
Yeah, that came up at the workshop, too.
Yeah, it seemed like there were some good options here that we've kind of dropped.
So if I might suggest it, it, I would say what we're talking about here is less directly in the realm of a planning process and more in the realm of what's the narrative that we develop that kind of conveys a kind of picture of the world drawing on what we've done in the past and these different options. So when we're engaging with the community, there's both a sense of some continuity, possibilities and all of those sorts of things. And they're not meant to be prescriptive, but they're also not meant to forget things that we've done. I think that's something that we can work with on our, on our outreach.
So Jim, to kind of build on that, you know, as Hillary said, we're in this agnostic process, but we obviously know a lot of things. And it may be worthwhile to be explicit about that, right? I mean, I'd be interested to hear from staff, you know, how has the problem statement changed? Actually, if you had to write it, you know, five years ago and you had to write it today, what does staff think that is? And then also do a point, Hillary, like you guys may have some preferred alternatives in mind already. And, and we may be able to be explicit with the community and letting them know, "Council and the city have been trying to deal with this for 10 years, maybe longer. You know, we, we lost the ball for a while, but now we're back. We're doing this, you know, agnostic process and yet we still have all this knowledge and staff thinks these are some of the ways it's changed and these are some of the parameters we're working within." So I think we, I think we can be agnostic, do CSS and be explicit about what we do know and what preferences we actually do have.
I was, I think the vision statement's actually pretty eloquent. I was just up in Gettysburg. It's very Lincoln-esque. And to connect the east and west portions of the city through an improved circulation network that binds the city together in all directions.
Any other comments on this item? Yeah. Again, I do think it's important to refer to that past because a lot of these people were involved and they're going to be, I think we heard a little bit at the workshops, like what, what about what happened to all this work we already did? So, okay, let's, let's move on to item number four.
Thank you, Chair. Item number four, we're going to change gears a little bit, and we're going to talk about another work product that is going to come out of our rail program management contract. This is somewhat separate from the context-sensitive solutions alternatives analysis task. This is more of a technical analysis that will be using the regional travel demand model as well as our local travel demand model, which dynamically assigns trips to different roadways... different roadways based on laneage, free flow, travel speed, other factors. So one of the things that we think would be beneficial pretty early in the process is to get a handle on how the transportation network in the city would be affected if we were to grade-separate certain crossings, hypothetically, if we were to close a crossing or make a crossing bike pad only. And we have scoped for the project team to analyze six scenarios on using the travel demand models as well as two no-build scenarios, so a total of eight different scenarios. And this would be a very high-level look using the existing travel demand model software to analyze the impacts to roadways throughout the city if certain scenarios were implemented. So on the screen before you, you see a sample of six different scenarios that could be tested using the model. And today, we also have included a blank sheet in your packet that looks just like this, and we're actually going to ask you to complete that for us in order to move forward with analysis of these six sample scenarios, ideally this summer. We initially scoped six scenarios, but we do think we may want to analyze additional ones moving forward if, if we don't think that six captures all the possible variations. So let me explain this table to you. On the left, the first column is the crossing location. This includes all of our railroad crossings, not just the ones that are not grade-separated. It also includes bike pad-only crossings at Homer and California. The existing column is what's out there today. So A means at-grade for all modes, S means grade-separated for all modes, B is grade-separated for bicycle and pedestrian traffic only, and Q is for quiet zone, and then X is for closed completely. And then finally, Y is for widening. So W appears in the Embarcadero row because Embarcadero Road is four lanes, but the undercrossing is currently only three lanes. So along the top axis, you see the six different build scenarios, and we tried to organize these in a logical way, but I'll tell you, it was very, very difficult to do with six scenarios. So we have what's called the low build, which I'll go through just a couple as an example, and then you can ask me, you know, further questions if you have any, need some additional clarification. So the low build scenario would close Palo Alto Avenue. It would not build the Everett Avenue-Litten bike pad crossing that's identified in previous planning documents. It would leave University Avenue and Homer as-is. It would widen Embarcadero Road undercrossing. It would close Churchill Avenue. It would retain the existing conditions at California and Oregon. It would close East Meadow Drive, and it would grade-separate Charleston Road. These are hypothetical, they are only intended to test the model. We are not proposing that this be considered as an alternative moving forward, it's just to help us get a handle on what happens to traffic if we were to close those three at-grade crossings. And then if we go all the way to six, which is the full build, option B, that's basically if we had all the money in the world, what would we do? We would grade-separate Palo Alto Avenue, we would build a new bike pad crossing at Everett and Litten, we would widen Embarcadero Road, grade-separate Churchill, build our new bike pad crossing at Loma Verde, Matadaro Creek, and then grade-separate Meadow and Charleston. And then all the ones in between are different variations. It is important to note that the quiet zone and the at-grade have no effect on traffic circulation, they have no difference. We're just showing that because we really wouldn't recommend, well, we wanted to, you know, include scenarios and included some minor investments at some of the at-grade crossings, and those minor investments would be converting it to a quiet zone. But from a traffic circulation perspective, an A and a Q would not differ. The ones that are shaded in gray are the ones that are changed, the ones that are not shaded are, remain static in each of the scenarios. And then there's a couple of footnotes. Councilmember DeWoy, as you mentioned, one of the things identified in the rail corridor study was an alternative bike pad crossing near Churchill Avenue but not at Churchill Avenue. Kellogg is one option, there's also an option at Seal Avenue that would connect to a Bike Boulevard corridor that goes all the way across, you know, across Middlefield. So the notation there at Churchill, footnote number one, it says in close proximity, so it wouldn't necessarily be at Churchill Avenue, it would provide the same connectivity, but it could be at a different location. And then the other footnote is at Oregon Expressway. Oregon Expressway does not currently allow pedestrian traffic, so that's an important footnote for that. So with that, I'll take any questions, and then we provided a blank sheet that looks just like this with your packet, and we'd love to get your feedback on additional scenarios or even just components of scenarios that you think we need to analyze from a traffic circulation perspective.
Can I just add one thing, which is, this was super hard to do, and I think it's important to understand why we're trying to do this. We're trying to generate some information about traffic circulation that will help the public, the rail committee, the council define alternatives. We didn't feel like we could walk into a discussion with, about alternatives simply with our purpose state, our problem statement and our goals. We need to have some kind of technical information in our back pocket about how different grade crossing changes affect local circulation. But that is not to say that we've hit the whole universe here, in fact, far from it, and we would need to probably reanalyze even these alternatives down the road once we determined, if, for example, we decide we're going to separate Charleston, once we determine how we would propose to do that, the trench or some other alternative, it's going to have an impact on local circulation, so we'd have to circle back and do some additional analysis. So this is really just, you know, kind of an early scattershot approach to generating some data that could help on an alternatives discussion.
Could I ask a framing kind of question, Mr. Chair, or a statement? Actually, first of all, where is lead on the periodic table there? I can't quite find it anyway. It should be 82, wherever that is, but anyway. Is, is the primary, I mean, I think it would be good to, however, when we do this as a layperson's perspective, that there's some definition to these criteria in these bills? I mean, is it mostly money, or are there other factors that come into play, for one thing? And then secondly, is the idea that you can have, I mean, you could have different solutions across the spectrum there? It's not like it's, it's not like the columns themselves are interlinked in every situation. Is that correct or not?
So the only ones that are, well, so the answer to the first question, I actually forgot the first part of your question.
Well, we know, it's really about the six criteria across the top. What's, what, what shapes the difference between low and full build? Is it mostly money or is it?
The titles that we've given them are just our effort at trying to make them more legible. We didn't just want to have one, two, one through six, we wanted to try to, so low build actually, you know, is only grade separating one and closing three, so it's, you know, we called it the low build. The only ones that do have an interrelation are four, five, and six. So four is full build phase one, so four is a first step towards full build. And full build A is a little less, could be a little less costly than full, full build B. Full build B is if we had all the money in the world, what would we want to do in our, in staff's opinion? And four, four is kind of what could we do as a first step to get to full build without precluding the full build options? And then low build, medium, low, medium build and medium build are again just names that we came up with that thought would explain somewhat the rationale behind each scenario, but there's hundreds of different variations of this. We put, what we put on there is what we think is, could be the most logical scenarios to analyze based on previous work that's been done and kind of our understanding of the dynamics of each of the locations.
Okay. So I just want to understand this a little better in my head. There's two reasons to do grade separations. There's trap, there's safety, and then there's traffic flow if you're running, you know, 12 trains an hour, right? I mean, that's, those seem to be the two reasons. I mean, is there any other reasons you'd do them?
Noise, reduced horn noise.
Okay, so reduced horn noise. I agree with that, so that's the three. So, you know, on some of these, you know, which we've never discussed is, is closing during certain times when there's a lot of trains running and not closing other times, you know, that partial close. I mean, I am thinking like Churchill and, you know, maybe one of the other ones. Is that worth looking at, or is that not worth looking at? I mean, why would you necessarily, I mean, you might necessarily close it for safety and the horn noise, but you could use a quiet zone, I suppose. And you could only use it, you know, when there's trains aren't running as much, which are on the weekends frankly, or, or that. So I am just wondering if there, if there's a reason why you might want to look at that.
I think we could look at that. I would say that the travel demand model primarily looks at the peak hours.
So from a travel demand point of view, it's, it's irrelevant? And that, that may make sense.
Yeah, I think it could be a further, you know, a next step in the analysis potentially if we determine that that might be something we want to look at for some of the crossings.
Okay.
Sorry, to your first point, so you, you said traffic, safety, and noise. This is only going to give us information on the traffic component, not the safety or the noise.
Yeah, one other question. I realize this is looking at traffic. So how do we quantify, do we have a way of quantifying safety a little bit? You know, is there, are there methods that people use? I mean, obviously, you know, we could decide to basically outlaw cars in Palo Alto and we'd have no traffic accidents, but the costs of doing that are unacceptable. Like, we could close all grade crossings and we wouldn't have car accidents on the tracks. So, I mean, how do we decide? Is there metrics people use to decide when it's a small chance that something will happen versus, I mean, I'm just curious.
So the State Public Utilities Commission actually has a statewide ranking on the safety of grade crossings throughout the state, and they use that to prioritize funding, and Charleston is actually ranked unfortunately pretty high on that list. Not Charleston, sorry, Churchill Avenue has ranked pretty high on that list.
Is it safe?
Unsafe.
Oh, unsafe.
So we would probably use some of those metrics to just get a handle on what's happening currently, but I think as we move through the alternatives analysis process, we're going to have to look at what the estimated safety benefits would be of each of the different alternatives. So quad gate versus full grade separation versus a no-build scenario, for example.
And then I'm interested in the Embarcadero, I mean, notion, but I always thought that was really expensive, made a great crossing. But I mean, do you have any idea what it costs to widen that bridge to, you know, four lanes?
So this analysis will not include any kind of cost test? This is just what would happen if we widened Embarcadero Road to traffic?
And by widening, we're widening that, we're widening the bridge and putting four lanes all the way down, that's what you mean by widening?
That, that was the assumption here, is make it a four-lane bridge with better bike pad accommodations as well while we're at it.
Any sense what that costs roughly? I mean, is it?
We have not begun to look at that.
So, so just to be clear, and I think this is helpful, we are only looking at, at technical metrics to create scenarios to look at a circulation study. This is not, there's a whole bunch of other context, community metrics that are not including this, including cost, safety.
Noise.
Homes, home seized, any of those things, which may, you know, make these scenarios a lot less attractive other than just technical concerns. So again, when we go to like a layman, that we should never be showing something like this with only these engineering considerations. So is this kind of like the comp plan scenario thing where we want six different scenarios that cover the whole range of possibilities? I mean, what are, what are we trying to get out of this if we're not considering cost and other things?
So the main goal of this initial modeling is to provide us with information for when we go to the public and start to talk about alternatives, and somebody asks, what would happen if we closed Churchill Avenue? We would be able to say, well, you know, from a traffic perspective, we estimate that this number of vehicles would be diverted to Embarcadero, et cetera. So it's not, it's, it's a tool in the decision-making process, it is not a decision-making process in and of itself.
But it's kind of limiting the possible scenarios if it's not something we tested. If there's some new idea that was outside of this range, we wouldn't be able to answer that question, what the impact would be.
We, I think we would be able to analyze additional scenarios if we go to the public and, you know, as we get into the, delve into the alternatives development process, if a whole nother scenario comes out of the woodwork, I think we definitely have the ability to analyze additional scenarios as we move forward with this. This is just the initial set of scenarios.
Could you just explain the, the actual process for taking this and, and doing the analysis and how fast that is? I mean, it's not like you just have a nice little computer and you say, oh, well, Tom wants it, oop, oh, here's the results, oh, let's change that one.
So you want me to go into the travel demand modeling process?
No, I'm just trying to understand like how much it takes to change variables and factors and how quick the.
So the, the travel demand model has an underlying demographic layer that has traffic impact, traffic analysis zones that have number of jobs, number of homes, all the information of, you know, what's in that particular zone. And then overlaid on that is the transportation network that has links and nodes and, you know, the, a rough kind of model of what our roadway network looks like. What we would do here is we would break, you know, if, if a grade separation was going to be closed, we would break that link in the travel demand model and then run the model, which actually takes quite a bit of time to, it runs multiple, you know, iterations of the model. And then we would see where those trips divert to because that one grade, that link is broken.
So you don't run it on your laptop?
No. So it takes.
New Cray computers.
Yeah, so you would actually have to build, you know, six new transportation networks to overlay on that demographic model and then run it.
I mean, we're joking, but nobody has a model to, to actually optimize this and proposes the optimal solution?
Well, I think that's what we try to ascertain.
They don't let the computer figure it out and say, you know, this would be the highest throughput or whatever.
I'm sorry.
Then I wouldn't have a job.
But I think this is an important point, that what we would get out of this are the kind of illustrations that were included in your staff report with red and green roads, you know, near the, showing traffic, relative traffic volumes near the crossings, and we could then use that, those little diagrams to inform the discussion about alternatives in late September when we have the, the community meeting.
So I had a few comments, let's look at the quantitative measure list. I mean, I know you have LOS at intersections. We have general metrics, delays to transit, delays to pet and bikes. Is there a reason we don't have delays to motor vehicles? Is that, I mean, is delay a different metric than LOS?
You're on page, page two.
No, LOS is based strictly on delay at intersections.
Right, so are we saying we're going to measure transit at intersection? I mean, I'm just trying to understand if these are different metrics, if we should include delays to motor vehicles overall, not just at intersections?
Well, travel time, trip duration would calculate delay overall. That would be how long it takes a motor vehicle to travel from point A to point B. And then LOS is a calculation of level of delay at an intersection.
Right.
Primarily signalized intersections.
So I know, I guess, I know we're used to metrics for vehicles, but you have like the I, J, and L seem much more vague. I mean, are they meant to be, you know, specified, you know, total miles traveled by bike, LOS by bike? I mean, is it that specific or?
So delays to transit services would be if there's an existing bus route on a roadway, how is that, the performance of the, that bus route affected by a grade separation or a grade crossing closure? So that would be specific to the transit service that's already operating on the corridor, and it'd be related to level of service and, as well as access. Bike pad delay would primarily be from diversion, so if we were to close a grade crossing and not provide a nearby alternative, what's the added trip time between two TASs for a bicyclist or a pedestrian? So that would be a little bit more qualitative, I think, than, the model has trouble analyzing short trips because it uses TASs, which are fairly large areas, and it only calculates trips between those. So if it's an intra-TAZ trip, it'd be a little harder to, so that, the pedestrian and bicycle measure might be a little more qualitative than quantitative.
For vehicles, if we close an intersection, aren't you also modeling the car having to go around?
Yeah, that would be trip duration.
Okay.
But where is that on? On speed duration?
C.
Okay, and that's for motor vehicles?
Yeah, so if someone's traveling from, let's say, TAS1 to TAS31, and 50 people are doing that, this, the model will reassign them to another link, and then it'll calculate how much long. how much longer it's taking them to get from 1 to 31 with that grade crossing closed, or with the additional delay that's imposed.
Okay. So similar to the idea about time of day closures, I had emailed in, I think it, I think it's in Fremont, if, looking at kind of different levels of roadway. So if we had a separation that was for cars only, but maybe not for large trucks, you know, is, is that something that we would consider in this kind of circulation model? Like, so basically, you don't want trucks to go on Churchill, but maybe there was a way for cars to go through?
So LOS does include a percentage of truck traffic?
But I'm saying we actually have a separation that is, you know, no trucks allowed, basically.
So if we were to do that, we would be able to analyze impacts to traffic circulation based on having fewer trucks, or zero trucks at that grade crossing?
Okay. Yeah, so I first saw this, I was like, well, why are they asking us to come up with these scenarios? We're not rail engineers. But I think, as you've explained, I think I understand a little bit better. I do think we risk confusing the discussion by adding two kind of brand-new bike ped separations. And we're kind of looking at, how do we handle our existing crossing grade separations? And if we close those, how do we shift traffic? But then we're also asking about kind of these new ones, and I just feel like it does the potential to confuse the community. And, you know, I think a lot of the bicyclists would say, yeah, let's add these additional bike crossings. And it's just, it's kind of like new construction versus what do we do with the existing situation?
So if I could, those two, those two new crossings are identified in multiple adopted planning documents for the city. The only thing we're showing on here are things that have been vetted through additional planning efforts.
I mean, they're on the plans, but like, you know, Matadaro Creek, I think we'd have to seize homes to connect it, to have it through. I, I just think it's much earlier than, you know, Charleston and Meadow, those kinds of things. And I don't know how my colleagues feel, but I just feel like we're expand, you know, expanding the universe, it's going to make the community conversation more difficult.
So not only are those two grade separations identified in previous planning documents, but there's actually potential funding sources for both of those. The Everett Crossing is identified in the SUMC Development Agreement, and then the Matadaro, Loma Verde, is actually on the list of fundable bike projects under Measure B. So I think they are, might quite frankly be on the same timeline as some of the other grade separations.
To me, that's even stronger argument for just treating them as new projects. They're funded separately. We don't have to be talking about our grade separation efforts to fund those projects if they're funded in their, in their new construction. And that's kind of, that's kind of my point.
But the impact's a traffic model.
Yeah, so again, this is only intended for modeling purposes, and I think it is important to model how those work. If we were to close Palo Alto, does building a bike ped crossing at Ever and Litton reduce the bike travel times enough where it's inconsequential? Same for if we were to close Meadow and then add the Loma Verde, Matadaro Creek Crossing, does that then cancel out the, you know, the added delay from the closure of Meadow for bicyclists?
For the circulation, it makes sense, but we brought it up at the workshop as well. And again, if, if they're new projects with, with their own funding, I'm not sure why. It just makes the conversation more difficult, I think. You know, in terms of scenarios, I do think we should model something that's maybe a tweak of the former rail study, kind of a trench as far as possible. You know, let's assume that we can do the 2% grade and there's electric freight.
Well, a trench is going to be the same as a full build.
No, not necessarily. It's only a trench as far as possible. You know, yeah.
Yeah, so I think the trench.
The trench would be a variation of five without the bike ped crossing at Churchill.
Yeah, so I was thinking, great, great crossing at Churchill, and then, you know, doing the Kellogg kind of bike path. Is there any thought about widening University? Looking at how that would impact, particularly if we were going to close Alma?
So University Avenue, undercrossing is already four lanes, but University's only two lanes on the downtown side, and then it's three lanes on the Stanford side, further past Arboretum. I think if we were going to widen University, I think the primary goal would be to make it more bike ped friendly. I don't know that adding additional lanes without extending the widening in either direction would have much of a benefit.
Slow, we're not, we're only looking at the underpass and not considering the roads on either side?
I, I don't know that, I mean, if we were to widen University to six lanes, I don't, I mean, we can certainly consider a scenario with that.
Keep it as four lanes in the underpass, but maybe four lanes, you know, on the Stanford side. I, I'm just picturing, you're closing some roads off. So are we not considering, you know, widening in other places?
We could certainly look at that. That would be on Stanford land primarily.
I do think, you know, when you look at Alma, kind of a quiet zone versus closing versus grade separation. I certainly think widening Embarcadero should be evaluated in the flow.
But aren't you going to evaluate all those that's out there already?
These are samples, so I think the idea is that we would tweak these, or, you know, if we're going to pick six or eight or whatever. The other one was Oregon Expressway, I guess you really have no change there. Kind of a similar question, I guess. Widening that would be widening the entire roadway, right?
Yeah, I mean, the undercrossing is the same width as the feeding roadways, four lanes divided.
Well, we have Cal, right there.
No, I'm talking about Oregon.
Yeah, I'm just saying, near Oregon, we have the Cal, and then we're talking about Matadaro Creek, which is basically both sides of that.
Right, I, I know, but I'm just saying, think, if we're talking about like widening some of these for cars and things, then if Oregon's the one underpass we have, why not widen it for pedestrians too? If we're going to be, if this is what we're putting out there.
The other one I thought that wasn't on the list was, you know, if you, if you separated or widened Charleston, then maybe a quiet zone at Meadow if you left, left it as is. Yeah.
And from a circulation modeling perspective, that would be the same as number four. So if you model it as a, at grade crossing, it functions like a quiet zone.
Yeah, I guess what I was saying was that Charleston would, would widen as kind of a trade-off if, again, if.
Didn't we just narrow Charleston?
If Meadow was blocked more.
By widening, you're talking about something different than grade separating, the Charleston crossing?
Yeah. I think we had widening and then as another choice here, right?
Widening is for existing grade, grade separated crossings. Charleston is at grade, so the option we have for Charleston is either leave it at grade or separate it. And it has the most traffic volume of any of our crossings, so you see in all of these scenarios, we're suggesting that that's the one we would prioritize separating.
Yeah, I guess there's not a choice to separate and widen. So again, I'm not suggesting we do any of these, but if we were going to either close or leave at grade, certain intersections that I think other intersections might need to handle more traffic, and so not just separating, but widening.
So I definitely think that might be one of the information points that comes out of this exercise, is, you know, what is then the load on Charleston, and is two lanes or four lanes adequate to handle that load? But, you know, the first iteration of the modeling, I think we would assume that the grade separation had the same number of lanes as the approaching roadways on either side.
Okay.
Well, I mean, I do want to just comment on this, and, I mean, I think what Tom makes, says makes sense, I mean, right, Charleston, but didn't we, didn't we just allocate $10 million to narrow Charleston?
The, the section of Charleston or Astrodaro that crosses the railroad will actually be four lanes.
Okay, but I mean, isn't there other parts of Charleston that we've narrowed? And I, that's what I always hear about from people complaining about traffic.
Yeah, there was a lane reduction on several segments of Charleston or Astrodaro, but actually at the grade crossing and the Alma intersection, it will remain four lanes.
Yeah, but then doesn't it narrow and then traffic, you know, stops?
It narrows when the, you know, after the signalized intersection, when the extra lanes aren't needed for the operation of the intersection. So for this case, we would model a four lane over crossing, if that's the existing number of lanes it crossed.
So this is kind of getting to my point about, because we're just looking at the crossings, but we may need to widen other parts of the network if we're shifting a lot of traffic somewhere, right?
I, I think this is all information that will come out of this exercise. You know, we'll be able to sit down and say, okay, if we do X, Y, and Z, then Charleston becomes overloaded and no longer functions. So are there things we could do, both at the grade crossing and in the approach roads that would maybe mitigate some of that overload?
So are you going to model what, what Tom says is, you know, it may show on the grade crossing itself that you get through, but all the extra cars then cause, you know, thousand yards up the street? That's where the problem is, but you haven't modeled that, you've just modeled the grade crossing.
We're modeling the entire city and how the city transportation network performs under each of these scenarios. So it won't just be a snapshot, it'll be the whole city network, and what are the effects on the network of each scenario?
Okay. Before this meeting, I was thinking we should look at a kind of no impact to homes scenario. And again, I know that's not what we're considering here, but if you guys look at this and say, here's a scenario where we don't think we'd have to seize homes, that may be like the low build scenario perhaps, I'm not sure.
I, I think we're far too early in the process to, to make that determination as to what an alternative, what the impact of each alternative would be. We have not even got into the alternatives development process. This, the model, it'll simply be a switch that's, you know, is it at grade, is it grade separated, or is it closed? It doesn't consider design elements of, of a grade crossing.
We have one public speaker who'd like to speak on this. Dean Levin?
So thank you for explaining the context about what this is for traffic model testing purposes only and what it does. And this needs disclaimers, you know, this, this is a public document, and I think that if not understood in that context would cause a great deal of confusion, and so any additional versions of this would be very helpful to have a lot of really big print explaining that these are not scenarios, these are engineering exercises to look at the traffic patterns in order to prevent confusion. That's one comment. And comment two relates to the thoughts about whether or not to include bicycle options. And given Palo Alto's overall goals with bicycle circulation and mode share, and given what we see in other parts of the world where you build a really great bicycle network, and wind up with, you know, middle double-digit percentages of people using bicycles for everyday trips, I think if we leave it out, then we're thinking, hey, a circulation study is really mostly about cars, but with, you know, bikes is kind of a little exceptional thing, which is what it has been historically. And if those things are included, it's really thinking about the city's goals of having bicycling as a first-class and really high mode share mainstream transportation mode. So I think that does make sense to include for those reasons, given the city's goals. Thank you.
Yeah, and just, just to clarify on my comments, I think for circulation study, we should include all the projects. Just when we get to the community workshops, we should focus on projects using grade separation money, if we have other projects that are funded. I don't want the community, like, debating if we should fund those projects because they're funded. Any other comments on serious?
Yeah, just a comment on your, your last comment there. I, I think you're right, we should be letting folks know to some degree which ones we've studied before, which are kind of the highest priority in terms of we might get funding for them, which are kind of separate, but maybe ancillary, right? Whether that's the bike crossings, things like that, there's kind of some, a few categories here of crossings we're looking at, and whether we've studied them and what we're going to do going forward.
No more comments?
I just, I just had one disclaimer, what's the turnaround time on them filling these things out? And I would share that you guys don't need to worry that this will, your answers will not affect you getting into the college of your choice, okay?
Yeah, so by next Wednesday, I think would be great.
Yeah, and Josh, you can clarify this, but I think it's actually going to take several months to do this modeling, but we're hoping we'll have kind of early results and little diagrams that we can share at the workshop when we schedule that.
Yeah, so to. To echo the public comments, I think we've got to be very careful how we present that information. All right, so let's move on. Any interagency communications? Future agendas? So I guess our next meeting.
I would just say, it's. It's sort of a little bit off point, but just since it's rail, you know, we have some kind of ongoing conversations with Caltrain in general. We've got some feedback I think we need to provide to them, and, you know, on more of the safety issue, we're, we're talking and working with them about potential installation of West Side fencing, you know, where we've got gaps. So we'll be reporting to you on those things in the future. Thanks.
Oh, I, yeah, also, we talked several times about this Union Pacific letter. I guess San Francisco and San Jose have sent theirs.
Yeah. So help me with that, because I was looking at that yesterday. Did we get a specific directive from you all on that, or?
I think we did. I thought we voted.
The directive was that Councilmember DuBois would provide the, the final letter after the LPMG made all of the edits, and then we would bring it to council.
We, we have the letter that was signed by San Francisco and whoever else, right? So that's the model for the letter.
Yeah, the city's basically decided to send their own letters, which I think we said at the last meeting. So we have a draft, and we have the mayors of San Francisco and San Jose sign the same letter.
So is there any reason that we just don't convert this to a letter for the mayor to sign?
So if we want to consider that, consider that the final version, we can move that forward.
We'll do that, I've got it. You have a copy of it?
We can get it.
I've got it, okay, thanks.
So I have, our next meeting is August 23rd. And then I'm talking to the city clerk, there's a question about whether we're going to meet twice a month or not, I guess in the fall? We've talked about that.
So I can't be here on the 23rd?
I may not be able to. Is there a potential any earlier, maybe the week you come back? 14th? I mean, 14th is the Monday.
So that works for me that week. I could do Wednesday morning that week.
16th? I think that would be better for the staff if we got you sooner than later, right?
Okay.
I can move 16th.
So if you need that here?
16th?
Should be one at 16th.
Okay, so we'll move the 23rd to the 16th?
That works much better from a workflow perspective, because we're going to PTC on the 9th, and then council on the 28th.
Okay. Could we do 8:30 instead of 8?
It's really hard for me if we could stick to 8.
All right.
It just impacts my workday. And then this other question, do we want to commit to twice a month, September and October?
I don't want to commit now. I mean, if staff thinks we need to have the meetings, we can have the meetings, but I don't want to just say have a meeting if we don't have anything to do.
I think it's, yeah, scheduling issue. I think it's, yeah, scheduling issue. So as far as I know, the city clerk has not scheduled any meetings from September on. It's up to staff, I mean, should we just stick with the 4th, Wednesday?
Yeah, I think, I think that would be our preference, just to stick with one a month. And then if, for some reason, there's a month where we need to schedule an extra one, we could do it at the time.
Great, okay. Okay, and I guess the agenda for that meeting will be following up on the PTC discussion. Great.
One, two, three, four. Just, I may not get into micro issues if the 27th.
If the 27th is the 4th Wednesday, mayor and I will not be here that day. So I don't know if there's.
That's the 27th.
Yes. Whether or not we could think about, look at the 20th as a possibility the week before, if we're just sticking with Wednesdays.
I can do the 20th. Yeah, I can do the 20th as well. Oh, wait, wait, we were going to be out. We're out that week as well, I think. So I don't think that works. Should we just leave it on the 27th then? Can you either move it to the 13th or do it on the 20th?
Yeah.
Your call. When does, is staff going to have?
Well, the 13th could be appealing because we could, you know, if we hold the public meeting in the later half of September, we could use that as kind of the final check on the agenda and other elements of the workshop.
Yep. Everybody do that?
Yeah. 16? 13?
The Wednesday. And then October 25th? All right, let's say, meeting adjourned. Thank you, thank you very much.